Start of the Planning Board meeting of July 7th, 2020, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law, Chapter 38, paragraph 18, in the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Members of the public who wish to watch and listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner: WCTV, Channel 9 on Comcast Xfinity, Channel 37 Verizon's FiOS, and livestream wctv.org. This meeting of the Wilmington Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Members of the public who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may also do so via telephone by dialing 1-646-558-8656 and enter meeting ID 838-7306-3076, then press pound and press pound again at the next voice prompt. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment by following the steps previously noted, then press star 9 on their telephone keypad. This will notify the meeting host that the caller wishes to speak. All callers using this feature will be placed in the queue in the order they enter the prompt. In the event that despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide for real-time access, we will post a record of this meeting on the town website as soon as we are able. Okay, being 7:33, we have a 7:30 appointment. Continued Public Hearing Conservation Subdivision Design Special Permit 19-01 for 79 Nickel Street, map 35, parcel 29. Jill, are you up?
I'm unmuted, I apologize.
There you go. I bet there's a lot of people like to mute you, huh? Sorry.
All the time. I refrain. So, basically, we're back. We had been working to finalize the yield plan as we had told you was kind of difficult during these times, but we've been able to actually produce a final plan. What I would like you to know, Mr. Sorrentino, is what we did do is we went back to the Water and Sewer Commission.
Okay.
Because in the event that the Planning Board did not want to grant the special permit, we did want to make sure that we understood what they wanted to do relative to the sewer connection and get confirmation that they, in fact, were granting the out-of-district sewer connection, whether it was the OS, it was, I apologize, the CSD or a conventional. So, we did go back, we did get that approval. Our preference, please do not misunderstand that, our preference is absolutely to do the conservation subdivision and to provide that open space and connectivity with regard to the canal. So, we had completed a revised yield plan, had attempted to address all of Mr. Looney's comments with regard to the yield plan, and submitted that to him, and we did receive a comment letter back, basically confirming that the yield plan does comply and demonstrates a five-lot, if you will, conventional system, sorry, subdivision. At this point, we still need to address, you know, other comments, we need to go back, we need to create the conservation subdivision and basically just create it, show the connectivity with regard to the canal. We did submit those plans, but before we were to go forward, we had been told by the board, "Look, get your yield plan in line, because if you don't have that, this is kind of foolish undertaking." So, based on that, we are now going to return and complete our CSD.
Okay. So, Val, so Paul seemed to be okay, everything was just a little minor thing, so we're good to move ahead?
Yeah, he was fine with the yield plan for this process. I think he had concerns if it should turn into a conventional subdivision, then he would have more comments, but for this purpose, he was okay with it. And then he just pointed out that we had issued comments on the concept plan way back, and we look forward to seeing the plans revised.
So, will this just be a continuation of a public hearing, or does it need to be a resubmission?
No, it would be the continuation of this public hearing.
Okay. So, Jill, are you good to come in next month?
I really think because of the times, I don't know how much Paul can review and how quickly. I would have to ask Ms. Gingrich, what do you think? Do you think we should go for two months? Because we're going to be resubmitting, we resubmit the storm, we, I mean, a full resubmital.
Right.
Is he, you getting any vacation lined up, do you know, Val, or anything?
I don't think so, but I guess what we ask is that it be submitted at least two weeks prior to the meeting, and that in typical times where you have enough time to review with those two weeks, we are extra busy right now, so if you're going to cut it close to those two weeks, you may be better off to wait till September, but it's up to you.
Mrs. Sorrentino, I don't want to put pressure on Mr. Looney or Ms. Gingrich to try and get it done, so if it's okay with the board, I would prefer to do, push it to September and give them the time they need with the plans.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. They don't even extension or anything, right, Val, so there's no...
No, we don't, it's a special permit.
All right, so we can put them on 7:30 on September, what?
I think it's September, is it September 1st? I believe, but let me just ask others. Remember if it's the first, I'd be eight.
Well, the first Tuesday is the first.
Right, and the seventh is Labor Day, so I think it's the first.
Okay.
That would be wonderful, then we can return.
Yep, it's the first. Okay, great.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to continue the public hearing to September 1st at 7:30.
So moved. Rondi?
Second, Terry.
Okay, how do you vote, Angela?
Yes.
Sean?
Need a way for him to be unmuted.
That's Mr. Sorrentino.
Thank you. Rondi?
Uh, yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So, okay, Jill, we're all set, September 1st, 7:30. Thanks for squaring up that plan. Look forward to seeing you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Take care, everyone.
All right, you're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, we forgot to do a roll call attendance if you...
Oh.
That's okay, I forgot to.
Oh, roll call attendance. Terry, you here?
Present.
Sean, you here?
He's muted.
You here, Sean, right?
I'm here, Cheryl keeps muting me.
It's not, don't blame me.
Angela, you here?
Present.
Rondi, you here?
Present.
All right, Mr. Sorrentino is here.
Thank you.
That's good, that brought us to 7:40. So, we have a continued public hearing, site plan review 20-02, stormwater management permit 20-02, parking release special permit 20-02 for 330 Ballardville Street. Are they here?
Yes, I believe a representative of Monogram Foods is here tonight.
Yes, I'm here, Ron Bastian.
And Ed O'Connor here, I believe.
The contractor for Monogram.
Okay, so we got... So, what do we got?
So, earlier today, I spoke to Ms. Gingrich to talk about this plan that we're proposing, and she made, she allowed me to understand exactly what we need to do as far as, we were asking for a conditional permit, and obviously, that's not something that can be granted, as I now understand, but what we're looking for is, at this point, we're trying to get this all set up for the next meeting, which would be in August, I believe it's August 4th. But what I want to be clear on is, more or less like a punch list of things, just to make sure that when that comes around, I mean, we're, our business is being severely hampered by this, so anything I can do to expedite this, I'd like to know, in fact, one of the things was this permit application needs to be in by Thursday, I found that out today, so just those kinds of things where if I can understand a little better what all needs to happen so that we can be successful during the next go-around.
Val, does Paul have a list of questions, or is it just this parking issue?
So, if you recall, there's an addition proposed to their existing building. We had worked through all of the issues associated with that and got a revised plan, but then the parking numbers didn't work, so they didn't have enough parking on their site. So, we advised them that they could, if they, you know, wanted to, they could apply for a parking special permit. They did do that, and they're showing a gravel, an existing gravel area on the abutting property that they are actually working towards purchasing. And then, when we reviewed that, we found that that area was not permitted through the board, and it was sort of just put in a few years back without approval, so they'd like to use that parking area for their parking. So, what they need to do is sort of come in with a proposal that includes both the addition and that parking area, and improvements to that parking area that meet all of our requirements. So, we advised them of that, and that those things would be needed, you know, would need to be permitted together so that they're fulfilling their parking requirement, and they wouldn't be able to start construction without their approval from the board. So, they're looking at applying for site plan review and stormwater for that parking area on the adjacent lot, and so that all of this can sort of be combined and approved together, and if everything looks great, hopefully, that's in August.
You think you could do that, Ron?
Well, I think so, but what, I just want to make sure, I think one of the most dangerous things I could do is assume that I know what that list is, and I don't want to presume that, so we believe, well, for several months, we thought we were right there, so I do agree with Ms. Gingrich that I think the, we're good on the site itself, but this, the parking thing, I believe we're going to be able to get the application, and I was told the deadline was Thursday noon, and Ed's assured me that we can meet that deadline, but I just, what I don't want to do is have something else come up that, "Oh, we should have done that last week," and then it pushes it till September. So, I'm just more or less looking for a punch list that we can knock out. I think if that's the only thing that's out there, I think we're doing very well. It's just the surprise things that we didn't know about before, and no disrespect, I'm not saying anybody got, we just, we just didn't, we kind of backed into this, and, you know, that's the way it goes, but water over the bridge, I guess.
Yeah, we want to help you get through this, we don't want to keep putting it off. It's not like you're doing some major thing here. So, Val, go ahead.
So, we advised, when we had CDTR with them, we sort of advised them that, you know, the gravel, the parking lots are paved, you know, you won't be able to strip a gravel lot, as they were sort of suggesting, you know, the, they have jersey barriers and those types of things kind of up to demarcate it, there's not a real curb cut to get into the lot, they're sort of jumping the curb to go over it. So, we just advised them to sort of formalize that area and make it an actual parking lot that would meet the requirements, and I think the, that's the easy part, and then just meet stormwater.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, that'll be the easy part, it's the stormwater part. So, Paul knows that's coming, right? They can work with Paul and get through that, so we don't have to get that prolonged.
Yeah, and what, we spoke, Ron and I spoke earlier, and he had said that his engineer tested pits and that the results were favorable, so, you know, the hope is that they can make something work pretty easily, they seem to have some space over there, so, you know, space shouldn't be tight, so hopefully, they'll get us something that looks great, and we can get this going.
So, Ron, and Ed, I mean, if you don't know already, I mean, Paul's really big on the stormwater stuff, and he's really very knowledgeable, so, and he's very helpful, if you work with him, he'll walk you through it, just, you know, just try to make him happy, I guess, so...
Well, that's what John, Judd, our professional engineer, has said, he's worked with him in the past, and he said the same thing, so I think that those two just need to get their heads together, and very straightforward operation, I really don't see that as being an issue based on what I'm hearing, so very hopeful that that's going to happen, I just, all I want to do is make sure that we can make this August 4th deadline, which is actually not really the deadline, the deadline's this Thursday, that's much more important than August 4th, as far as I'm concerned, all the work's going to happen before then, I think. You know, that's just more or less the meet with you guys, and then everything else should fall into place.
Okay. So, we'll keep them on, Val, 7:40 on August?
Yes.
Valerie, I have one question.
Go ahead.
So, we had our application from the last month when there was the proposal for the gravel parking lot, and we have all the abutters and all the plans and all the items that were on the list, is that application still valid as long as we, you know, obtain the John Judd newly created paving of the parking lot plan? Because it's hard to get all these notifications, because it's in Andover as well, so I was hopeful that the application that we just submitted, you know, for last month would still be okay, or if I need to do something, I just don't want to, you know, try to pull a rabbit out of a hat if that's the case.
I think it would be fine to use the same abutters list. Change within a month. You will want to fill out the application for site plan review and the application for stormwater management permit, and then include...
The new date.
Right, yes, those are...
Sure.
For that, for that parcel, so you did all of that for 330, and now you're going to do that for the other parcel as well.
Well, no, we actually, we did do it for the other parcel, and Wilmington's great, but trying to get Andover to react to this isn't easy, because it's not really something they're worried about, so I have, I think, the one, but we'll make sure we get everything re-dated and over to you folks as quickly as we can.
Yeah, you can use the same abutters list that you did for the special permit for this, it's two other applications that you want to submit.
Okay, great.
Okay, you guys good? Anybody getting questions? Okay, so we'll continue the public hearing to, we said August 4th, right?
Yes, sir.
August 4th at 7:40. Okay, so I'll take a motion, Rondi.
Don't move.
Second, Terry.
Okay. Angela, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sean, how do you vote?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Terry?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, see you then, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time tonight, guys.
You're welcome. So, we had a 7:45, is Twitch's request to extend?
Yes, extend and continue the public hearing.
So, we're going to extend it to August, is that what they want?
Yeah, they wanted to take this time to revise the plans and get everything correct, and then be back in front of you in August with, hopefully, everything wrapped up.
So, you want to go to August 4th at 8:45, is 7:45 rather?
Sure.
Same times?
Sounds good.
Okay, take a motion to continue the public hearing. So, we're going to extend it not to July, we're going to extend it to August 31st?
Rondi, so move to extend and continue the hearing.
To 8:40 at 7:45. So, I have a second, Terry.
Second, Terry.
Hey. Angela, you in favor?
Yes.
Sean, you in favor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Terry?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
I vote yes. Oh, so moved. Okay, we have nine minutes, would you like to do the Form A?
Sure, why not? So, we have a Form A tonight, I'm actually going to pull it up on my screen here, and it's a little interesting, so, and I wish I had sort of a highlighter, but maybe I do, let's see if I can do this. So, no. All right. So, this is Towpath, the end of the cul-de-sac on Towpath Drive, and then this is Chestnut Street. When, when these parcels were subdivided, there was this 50-foot-wide roadway and utility easement created between this lot, number 48, zoom in here a little bit, and number 48 Chestnut, and this one is...
Lot 18A.
Lot 18A. And right now, the lot line is right along the edge of that easement, right here, and so as you can see, their driveway kind of includes on the other person's parcel.
Yeah.
This is the part of this parcel right here, which is 46 Towpath, which is a weird-shaped lot, it's this piece right here, and then it extends and includes this strip, so...
So, so that, that three-quarter circle there is, is the cul-de-sac of Towpath Drive?
Yes, right here, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I got you.
So, they needed, they needed part of the frontage for their lot, right?
All right.
So, what they want to do is abandon this lot line, because their driveway is partially over it, and move it over to have more land area. The easement stays the same, it's just that this person will own part of the easement, and this person will own part of the easement, but otherwise, everything meets zoning requirements, it's just kind of shifting this line over.
Okay. I guess that makes sense. Okay, take a motion, we accept, the Form A is submitted.
So moved.
So moved.
So, moved by Terry, second by Rondi.
Okay.
How do you vote, Angela?
Yes.
Sean, how do you vote?
I'm good with it, thank you.
Terry?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
I'm good too, yes. Okay. So, so Val, I have to swing by and sign that?
Um, so, you know how we did the votes for electronic signatures? We still have not received word that those have been recorded, so we will be contacting you so that we can get your signatures on these things.
All right.
All right.
You got to wonder why we bothered.
Exactly.
Yeah.
What are you going to do?
All right, so Sean, did you read the minutes from November and December, and January?
I got through November and December.
Terry, did you read the Januaries? I didn't read Januaries. How do they look? Sean, that's your job.
I know.
Give me a minute, I'll read them while we do some other business.
Carol, did you do the minutes?
Did I?
Yes, did you do them or Sierra do them?
I did them.
Oh, then they must be right.
Of course. Sierra and Val edit them.
Yeah, we all, we have our hands in them, but Cheryl does all, all the, all the work.
So, Sean, how did November and December look? Good?
Yes.
Right. So, while Rondi's going through Januaries... How's everything else?
This is six months ago. I have a hard time remembering yesterday, if you know what I mean.
That's why we give to the young guy.
Well, thank you to all of you who came out to town meeting. It was a different, fun time.
It actually went pretty well, I have to say, I was quite impressed with all the work that was planned and done.
Well, like anything that's outside, the weather's 90% of it right, so...
Yeah.
Wasn't windy, it didn't rain. It did go well, I think, it went pretty good.
Yeah, and our McDonald Road zoning article passed, and stormwater passed, and the transfer of parcels to conservation passed, so, successful there.
Seventeen-page minutes. We can't believe it's till next month, geez. No, they look pretty good so far, but I'm only on page six.
If you don't finish by the end, you, of course, can table them, but...
Okay, well, I'll keep working on it.
No, they all look good, I'm sure they will. I'll take a motion, we accept Novembers and Decembers, November 5th and December 3rd. How's that?
So moved.
Second.
Sean, who's, Terry, you seconded it? Okay. Angela, how do you vote?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Rondi?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. So, Novembers and Decembers, you keep reading Januaries.
Yep.
Sierra, are we getting anything we can do in two minutes? Any Board of Appeals?
There are two new ones in the continued Princeton case as well, so I don't know if you guys want to try to squeeze one in now.
No, we'll wait, we'll wait.
Or we can just wait, do them all, okay.
What's this request to endorse Corrected Sheet 4, Definitive Subdivision for Highland Estates, Val?
So, turns out the end year made errors on the meets and bounds when we, when Paul looked at the lots to close, so we had them look at it again, and it turns out they had made some errors on the plans as far as the, right, the meets and bounds and whatever else. And actually, we were told today that it's not only Sheet 4, it's a bunch of other sheets that have to be corrected, so the actual, you know, layout and content of the plan doesn't change, it's just that those lot line references need to be changed.
They all need to be resigned?
Yes. So, we told him that we would take that up, that I would, you know, ask the board to table the request tonight, because it's more than Sheet 4, and we don't have the plans yet, so that we take that up in August.
So, do you need a motion to table that? Is that what you're telling me? Terry, give me a motion to table endorsing Sheet 4 of Definitive Subdivision, 19-02 for Highland Estates.
So moved, as the chairman said. Terry?
Sean, second that.
I'll second that, Sean.
Okay. Angela, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rondi, how do you vote?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman votes yes, so tabled. So, Highland Estates, which one is that? Is that Jim?
That's Jim.
Yes.
So, can we find him, a couple of trees or something where we...
I think he feels fined already.
All right. Okay, so we have an 8 o'clock public hearing, signed special permit 20-01 for 196 Ballardville Street.
Mr. Chairman, Adam Quinn.
How's it going, Adam?
Hey, great, thanks, very prompt here, I appreciate that, this is the first call I've ever been on, it's actually timely.
So, what do you got for us?
I'm trying my hand at a new burger concept, and it's called the Habit Burger. The LLC is named Heidi Burgers after my wife, my dear wife, who's willing, willing to let me actually do this project. This is an end cap on the new development on 196 Ballardville Street, it's on the corner of Route 125, and the visibility for the building is real... And the visibility for the building is really on one twenty-five. Um, you can't see the front of the entrance to the strip mall until you're basically in the strip mall.
So this is the one near Target?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
So the, the corner where my, my potential customers are is really at one twenty-five and Ballardville Street that corner, that's the back of the building.
Right.
So I, I'm, I'm imagining that the town has always written the, the sizes of these signs to say, there you go, exactly, Val. The size of these signs for what to draw customers in the front of the building, but in this particular case, the back of the building is just as important to me. So, um, that's why I'm in front of you tonight.
How big is the sign, Val?
So let me just pull that up.
So, so what's the bylaw? We don't put front and back, is that what it is?
Well, so the, the bylaw goes by how much kind of front wall the business has. The business, this business has a front wall to accommodate one of these signs, it's, it's fifty.
Fifty-two point five, Val, sorry to cut you off.
Fifty-two and a half square feet, so. So its front wall would accommodate one of those signs. And the request is to have another, same sign on the backside. So it would be doubling what's allowed. But, like Adam said, there's kind of different, almost three different walls to this.
Right.
And.
And, and I think by, I think I can technically have two signs already, I'm just asking to.
Yeah.
Sign allowance by, by twice.
Okay.
I, I feel relatively confident that it's a, it's a very commercial industrial area, I don't think I'm upsetting any residents in the area.
So, um, put that picture back up, Val, of the.
Of the building?
Yeah.
Okay. There you go, so this is from one twenty-five.
So. Rondi, how come we didn't have a nice window or something? They'd break up that wall like you usually do, so, so I don't know, the sign might be an improvement.
Which side of the building, is that where the restaurant is?
No, it's the other side, I think.
Proving my point that you can't tell.
Well, the other side is the Dunkin' Donuts drive-through, isn't it?
But this is a different, this is a different mall now in this hall, this is a, a new development, but the one you're referencing is further down.
Oh, okay.
Oh, this was the new one he finally did, oh, okay.
Correct, correct.
Oh, we haven't been up there in a while, Rondi, I guess.
Yeah. I haven't been there in a long time.
So are you gonna be the first building in there, or?
I am, I'm the only crazy guy that I would know would want to open a restaurant during COVID. I can get, I'll take all the help I can get with this.
So, how many of these do you have? Is this your first one, or what?
My first one.
Oh, wow, you have some guts.
Something, somebody would say something else, but I agree.
I don't have a problem, you guys all good?
Uh, yeah, I'm fine.
I think I'm good, so the picture that we're looking at here is, this is like with my back to, well, in the direction of Target, right? Looking at the building.
Right, see.
One twenty, one twenty-five's behind it, right?
Right.
Back is at the off ramp.
So the sign would be on the, on the left?
Correct, so the left.
The face of the left, right?
Right, right up here would be the, sort of the front sign. And then on the opposite, you know, in the back of it, facing one twenty-five would be the other sign.
So that what's, is there any sign being proposed that faces Ballardville?
No, I, I didn't, I didn't, I thought that was too greedy of me, I thought this was reasonable, so saying we need one good one and one bad.
Alright, I'm good with that, that's kind of my question, actually, I didn't want both sides to be, yeah, okay. Seemed like a little much.
Okay. Anybody got any questions? Alright. Terry, you're up, I'll take a motion to, uh. Accept it as submitted.
Before you do that, Mr. Chairman. We don't, we don't have a draft for you. We wouldn't have any special conditions within that draft, so it's, it's up to you whether you want to, you know, close the hearing and issue the decision at the next meeting.
Yeah, we, we can do that.
Okay, great.
Is that okay with you, Adam?
I don't know what that means, but I'm, I'm always trying to play ball.
Okay. Yeah, that way we can close it, I think we're okay, I don't think we'll have anything crazy, but were you gonna suggest something else, Val?
No, I think that's, I think that's fine, unless you want to approve it with just our standard conditions without seeing a draft, but I don't think you usually do that, so.
Yeah, no, okay.
So we'd only be voting to close the hearing, like?
Right, and then we would provide a draft for the next meeting.
Okay, that works.
Does that mean you need me back again, or?
No.
No, we, we'll, we'll send you the draft approval, and if you have any questions or anything about it, you can contact us. And the board will consider that at the next meeting, you're welcome to come back, but we, we wouldn't need you.
Thank you.
Unless you want to talk about any of the conditions, but they're gonna be standard conditions anyway.
I'll still be reading the notes of those eighteen page notes by then.
I'd make a joke about, you know, us having a first drive-through, but this is being taped, so I can't do that, so.
Be there every day.
So, alright, so I'll take a motion, we close the public hearing. Except as submitted.
Don't move, sorry.
Alright, Angela, why don't you second that?
Second.
Alright, that's good, Sean, how do you vote?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Rondi, how do you vote?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes, you're all set, Ev.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So, Rondi's finished the minutes. I have, I have one typo on page fifteen. Under, um. Site plan review for nineteen dash thirteen for nine hundred Main Street. Under materials considered, it says site plan nine hundred Main Street, tow of Wilmington, it should be town, that's it.
Alright, I'll accept the minutes as amended.
Have to do that on television.
She really read them, Sean. Alright, make a motion there, Sean.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, how do you vote, Terry?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I vote yes, minutes are all accepted. It's eight oh-nine, okay, Sierra, you're up. What do you want to do, case thirteen dash twenty? Twenty-five Upton Drive?
Sorry, I had to turn off the AC so I can, so you can hear me. Um, yeah, let me just pull this up. So yeah, um, yeah, we can do the twenty-five Upton Drive, um. First. So, this place, I guess, makes medical application radioactive products, so what they're going for is a special permit for use of hazardous and or toxic material within the groundwater protection district. So they're proposing to possess, store, use and distribute radioactive material from these medical products. They also mentioned under the licensed authorization and oversight by the Mass Department of Public Health Radiation Control Program. That's about all I got on it.
Yeah, and I, Mr. Chairman, I looked into, I asked the clerk for the Board of Appeals about this one. To see, just to get a little bit of an idea of what, what they're doing. Just in a soundbite, a quick kind of bite of it, so apparently, they don't actually make or generate radioactive materials, they take in the jet, the radioactive materials and use them. In their, their treatments or their tests that they, that they do. And it's, I understand that it's sort of medical, medical materials that they're, they're working with. And then, once they're done with using them, they're disposed of properly. And they would be in very, very small amounts, so the reason they're asking for a special permit is because they're in the groundwater protection district. And that district is concerned about not letting things get into our groundwater. So this would be interior use that would be highly regulated and. They're not actually generating them, they're.
This is something they already do, they just want to do a little more of it, or?
Yeah, I actually think that they are, are new to town. I, I believe.
Val, when you say that they dispose of the material appropriately, what does that mean?
Um, so they would send it out, oh. What I read here is that the half-life materials would kind of come and go by the time that they've done, been done using them. And they do. Radio pharma segment diagnosis and treatment of cancers. And they'll possess, store, use and distribute radioactive material. So they wouldn't generate it, they would bring it in, use it, and then.
So it'd be kind of like medical waste kind of thing?
Right, right. They have radiation detection, detecting equipment.
Was the, is the building already set up for this, is?
Uh, no, this, I think they, they, I think they're doing a fit out, is what I, or have done a fit out of, of the space. It says that the waste material is secured in. Eight mil plastic bags, which in turn will be secured in closed steel drums and stored indoors in the waste management room. Drones are stored on a spill containment modular platform. And they cite all the rules that they have to abide by.
They probably are required by EPA regulations for disposal. To have an EPA generator ID, and then they track them, all that stuff. I'm guessing, but.
Yeah, no, you're right.
Pretty much what I have to do now.
Yeah, the floors in. Material handling areas are seamless and non-porous and designed to be de, be decontaminated in the unlikely scenario of contamination.
No, no floor drains, I assume?
No, no.
Okay.
Um, so this would be sort of a special permit for this use in the groundwater protection district.
Okay.
Have they done the construction yet? The, can, the, look at the, the mechanical drawings are like dated May something?
I, I don't know where they're at in the process, whether they.
I don't think they can get their permit till they're approved by the zoning Board of Appeals.
Right. I, I didn't get to talk to the building inspector about this, so I didn't hear it from him directly. At what point this was. Flagged for a permit. But I hadn't seen any fit up requests, so my guess is that they are gonna start fit up when they get their permit.
Alright.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty, I'm not too worried about it, it's pretty regulated and this is.
Yeah.
Is this, um, did they say anything about like USP eighty-five in their? In their, um. Documentation? I think I know what they're doing, and that's like, they use such a tiny amount, I mean, it's, it's not hard to take care of business, it's like. And it's all super regulated and, you know, all the design, all the building design. Commentary that you just had is all in line with, with what I'm used to seeing for that, so. It sounds like they're doing it by the book.
Isn't it they use, small volumes equal the fractions of an ounce?
Yeah.
They'll have to store so much of it before it's even worth transporting.
Well, I guess I'd want to know, like. You know, is it a modern building? We got sprinklers in there, what's? Like you said, is it a retrofit? Is it a new building? What is it?
Sprinklers installed throughout the facility, sufficient operational fire extinguishers on site.
Alright, so then it, that seems okay. Yeah, I'll take a motion, we recommend it's for approval.
So moved. Rondi?
Second, Terry.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Angela?
Yes.
Um, yes, okay.
Yes.
Terry and Rondi are yes too, since we moved it.
Okay, how we doing for twelve Shawshine Ave, Sierra?
Um, alright, so this one, and I think Valerie can also speak to this a bit better too, since they were in front of Conservation Commission. But they're looking for a special permit for the floodplain district, it's constructing a new single-family house. They're putting on the northwestern portion of the parcel to, to try to maximize the distance between the actual building and the bordering vegetated wetlands. Flood, floodplain compensation has been proposed, and they got an order of conditions, so I don't know, Valerie, if you have some more to add to that, or explain?
Pull up the, there's the plan. So. Um, Shawshine Ave is up here. Um, and this is a hammerhead lot that comes back. The lot line, so this is sort of the, the skinny portion that goes out to the street, and this is the back portion of it. They're, they're gonna be using an easement to get into their parcel with, this is an existing driveway. They'll get it, they'll do an easement. I think all three of these parcels are owned by the same family members. So the idea is to construct a new parcel back here. They are in the floodplain districts, so they're, they're showing fill, which is this kind of. This line, right, oh, I'm sorry, it's the, the orange line around the house, so they'll be filling around the house to raise it up. And then their compensation for that is the bluish line out here, and then it wraps around the side here. So they are doing one-to-one compensation at the same elevations, meeting the requirements of our zoning bylaw. And they did receive an order of conditions for the project. And, uh. I believe they're also, they have a, a simple stormwater in front of us as well. And they meet those requirements. The only thing, I did get an email today from Betty Bigwood of the Middlesex Canal Association. And she had seen this on our agenda and wanted to sort of alert me to, to that the Middlesex Canal went through this area, so I'm gonna follow up with her, I don't think it would be anything that, that would impact their permitting process necessarily. But I'll follow up with Betty to, to see. What she has to say about that.
Okay. I don't have any questions, everybody okay?
Yeah, looks like so.
Oops, do you want that back up?
No, it's alright, you guys good? You okay, Terry?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't have any. I don't have any questions. Specifically.
How about you, Sean, you alright?
I'm okay.
Angela, you okay?
Good.
Okay, take a motion that. Planning board gives us approval as submitted, I guess.
So moved.
Well, second, Sean.
Hey, Terry?
Uh, yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman votes yes. Okay. So we have an eight fifteen site plan review, twenty dash oh-five, stone water management plant, twenty dash oh-five for sixty-six Industrial Way. So they are also asking for an extension? Are they in front of us?
They are in front of you.
Oh, okay.
So Michael Field is on the call, I just unmuted him. You know, representative from. The company is also on the call. the company is also on the call.
Hey, Mike, you're up.
Hi.
How you doing?
Mike Cronin can, you know, answer any uh, technical questions you guys have about the site plan. Uh, we, we know it's the same site plan that was approved uh, by your decision back in December two thousand and sixteen, but you're welcome to ask him any questions you might want to ask.
Now, which one is this? Is this the one that's been getting held up for a while?
Yeah, so this is um, this goes back to twenty sixteen um, where they came in front of you to carve out the back right corner of their lot um, to provide better turning for their trucks around the building. And to do that, they have to move the water line and the sewer line for um, the budding parcel. There was an easement shown on a plan that was recorded, but there was never an instrument recorded for the easement, so it's sort of um, uh, unknown who can do what and, and all of that, so. We had asked in, in the approval previously that the, there was a condition that the, well, I'm just reading it to you because it's.
Conditions five and six, Ms. Gingrich, is the ones I think you're concerned about.
Yeah, so um, condition number five was the applicant shall provide a letter of acknowledgement from the adjacent landowner uh, to confirm that they're aware of the proposed scope of work. And as you've heard over the last few years, um, they've been having trouble um, working with the landowner, the adjacent landowner to um, to get um, you know, something from him and also to work on an easement. And so the proposal, I believe, in, in attorney field, you can kind of jump in here, but um, I think the proposal is to um, revise or eliminate that condition of the acknowledgement. I did speak with our council about it, and they said that um, instead of um, requiring an acknowledgement from the adjacent landowner, what we could do and what we should do is just um, ask that the applicant provide proof of notification. So, you know, they send a certified letter to the adjacent landowner and they just show us that they did that. So we're uh, aware that the adjacent landowner is um, aware of the project, which um, I believe we all know that.
He is aware of it.
Everybody's, everybody involved is aware of the project. So, um, I believe in attorney field, you can jump in if you have any other.
Sure, I mean uh, if, if for no other reason, his attorney sent a four-page letter to the board, I'm sure directed to Mr., to the chairman. And I responded to that letter, but I think by virtue of that letter alone, it's, it's very clear that he's aware of the scope of the work. We've tried for the last three years to um, obtain Mr. Cannavos's uh, consent to an easement agreement, right now, as Mr. Aluni, the town engineer well knows, there's an indication of an easement that it benefits Mr. Cannavos's land behind our land. But it's very, it's a very old easement plan, we cannot locate a grant of easement, there's no restriction with respect to relocating the easement, or with respect to relocating the pipes. So it would seem to me that Mr. Cannavos would benefit by an easement agreement, I might also add that if there was a break there, there apparently has not been a break in the sewer pipe nor the water pipe since the subdivision was created by the D'Scenzo family approximately fifty years ago. Those pipes must be full of sediment at this point. If there is a break, it's the wild west, nobody knows whose responsibility is to do what. We were happy to step up, enter into an agreement with Mr. Cannavos, cure this easement problem, and take responsibility if any uh, break or uh, or blockage were to occur. We had a very detailed agreement, we almost came to a uh, a final agreement with Mr. Cannavos's lawyer, but at the last minute, he declined.
Okay, uh, hold, hold on, Mike, but good. So Val, you're saying our town council is just saying as long as they give acknowledgement, which they have done or are willing, are willing to do, right? Even though we already know that he knows about it, right?
Yeah, what we can, what we can ask it for is just proof that, that they notified the adjacent landowner of the project.
And then this can go ahead, right?
Yeah, I guess the idea is to stay out of a private matter.
Okay. So, so Michael, you, you know, part of that, right? We, I know you already did this, we already got the letters.
I'm happy to send a certified letter and, and then.
And move this ahead, right? So, okay, so is the board having?
David to Ms. Gingrich as to what I did and a copy of the certified receipt.
Okay, so you've done that, or you will do that?
I will do that.
Okay, well, thank you, my, my fault. Okay, um, the board have any questions? I guess there's a question from someone in the audience, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask one more question?
Sure.
Attorney Field, um, did you, did you have concerns about um, condition number six um, requiring that an easement be drafted and recorded prior to the work being completed? Is that?
Yes. You know, um, I agree that probably it would be better off to have an easement agreement. We've tried for three years to get one, Mr. Cannavos has just stalled us and stonewalled us. It may be after you guys um, waive condition five and he realizes he can't really stonewall us any longer, they may come to an easement agreement. If not, I may have to go to the land court and get permission to relocate the pipes. If I do, there'll be a court order, Ms. Gingrich, one way or the other, and that'll be recorded. So, I mean, I'm, I, you know, an easement agreement or deed of easement kind of requires two parties to agree to it. If I can't get Mr. Cannavos and his attorney to agree to it, I'm not sure exactly where we are. So, uh, if what you're suggesting is, it, it may very well be that condition six should be waived as well. I mean, one way or another, uh, we're gonna have to resolve it between the parties or in court.
Okay.
I, I, I have one other request, and that is that uh, if the board does uh, provide the relief we're requesting, it may very well be that they will be uh, more amenable to come into an agreement with us. If they do not, I don't want to have to come back here and ask for another continuance of substantial construction. I'd ask you now if you could put that date out by six months to give us some time, or I'll have to go to court, one way or the other.
So Attorney Field, this would be a new approval, um, so we would approve the same plan that was approved before um, with a new approval, so your clock would restart.
Okay, that's fine, I was unclear about that, thank you, Ms. Gingrich, I appreciate that.
And we um.
So, we are gonna, we would take a motion to waive conditions five and six, was it, Val?
Well, so this is a new application, so I think what we would do is just, we would draft a new approval without those conditions and um, impose that for you um, to, to, to consider that. We have that tonight.
Okay, okay.
So this is, so this is a recommendation from our town council that I want to make sure I heard that right, like, that by, you know, um, by not requiring acknowledgement, we're, we're, we're still, we're, we're basically putting it in the, in, in the, in the owner's hands, right, in sixty-six and eighty's hands to work it out, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, what he said was.
That's what it feels like we should be doing, I mean.
Yeah, um, staying, it's, it's a, it's um, it's something that the two private property owners have to work out, and um, we wanted to sort of step out of that.
So it's, it's kind of to, to make it, it's similar to what happened on Main Street, with the auto body shop and the guy behind him, right? He's been in between and, right, he sued and they settled it and they took care of it, right, so it's kind of similar to that.
I would, I, I would agree that, you know, from our town council and our perspective, that we should waive number five, but I would keep six at this point. I don't think the town council has advised on, on number six, and I think that would be something that we shouldn't do at this point, or I wouldn't vote to do that.
Six has to do with the easement, you mean?
Correct.
Yeah, it, it states, the deed should be drafted and recorded at the registry of deeds specifying said rights, restrictions and responsibilities within the utility easement. A copy of the recorded easement deed should be provided to the engineering division.
Can I make the uh, comment that that condition is after work is completed, the first condition was before the plant, before the uh, decision is endorsed, or the plant, I'm sorry, the site plan is endorsed. So we couldn't even get started.
Right, so, alright, so you want fi- five gets waived, so you could start the work, six, six comes into, when, once you're done, right? And that'll give you enough time to screw it away, one way or the other.
We will continue to try to work something out, if we can't, we may have to go to court. But remember, an easement agreement kind of requires both parties agreement, that's the problem.
Okay. Okay, Val, did you want to go the person in the audience, uh?
Sure, uh, let's see here. And um, just a reminder to the, um, if you'd like to ask a question, you can press star nine on your keypad. I'm gonna unmute the caller now, and the caller can introduce themselves for the, for the board.
Yes, this is Peter Sutton, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Alright, I'd like to uh, address the board requiring and responding to Mr. Field. One of the problems uh, that's overlooked here is article nine, uh, paragraph number nine, it says on, on number eight. Projects shall be operated in accordance with the operation and maintenance plan. The operation, maintenance, repair and replacement of all drainage structures uh, should be the applicant's responsibility. During our conversations, they've denied that they have any responsibility to maintain or repair should a break occur. And we were told that the repairs would have to be at our expense. And when you put bituminous over the pipes, that's a very expensive project. Number two, the Senso Properties is a taxpayer in town, just like anyone else, they pay a million five in taxes a year. And two hundred occupants are relying on water, sewer and sprinkler. We have no idea how long we would be without uh, those utilities during the construction. We asked simply for the posting of a bond, and that was denied. Number three, the term acknowledgement means acceptance. Uh, if you look it up in Black's Law Dictionary, uh, even though it says the scope acknowledgement, that they're aware of the scope of the work. What, what Mr. Field is trying to do is to have you give them permission to move our pipes. Now, the easement issue is another issue, but the pipe, the pipes were put in by Fred D'Scenzo. We own the pipes, they cannot move our pipes without our permission. If they want to relocate them, they, this is registered land, they have to go to land court and submit a plan. Now, Mr. Field just said today, we may have to go to land court. That should be a condition in this, instead of waiving condition six, it should be that they have to get the easement before they can touch our pipes. So I don't understand what's going on here. You know, the only thing before the board today was uh, on the notice of public hearing, was to amend, to eliminate condition five. If you interpret condition five to mean that uh, we need to know the scope of the work, that's one thing. But condition five said something more, it said, the people that you're moving their pipes need to acknowledge and accept what you want to do, because it's their property. It's their pipes, regardless of whether it is an easement or not. And so they're using this language and the removal of the five to give them a leg up and say, well, we now have the permission of the town to touch those pipes. Now, we want to be a good neighbor. And we, we have been talking on and on and on and saying, okay, if you're gonna do all this work, how will we protect it? And we were getting the door slammed in our face.
Alright, so, so Mr. Sutton, you're representing the property owner, right? So are you telling, are you telling the board that if, if, if they would put up a bond, that you would permit them to do the work? Is that what's holding this up?
What's one of the things that's holding it up, the other thing is the scope of the work, there's ledge there. They're dropping these pipes four feet lower. The big problem is, and Mr. Field made a misstatement, there was a leakage many years ago, and Mr. Cannavos went over, dug it up and fixed it. So I don't see what he's saying, there's never been a leak. This property that he's living on, that uh, that the applicant owns, was once part of uh, the D'Scenzo Properties. And what we want to know is, not so much, you know, the bond, as well as, how do we get in to fix it? You're putting a fence around it, you're putting bituminous on it, you're dropping it four feet below, if we have to fix it, do we have to pay for it? You're moving our pipes, we could just go in tomorrow with a backhoe, fix it and we'd be out in, you know, four hours. This is gonna be a two-day or three-day repair job. What's gonna happen to the two hundred people that have no water, no sprinklers and no toilets? This is a serious uh, situation. But yeah, you should put in that they put a bond in for this work. I'm not gonna, I, I would, I would think that should be included.
Val, is there a way to pull up the conditions?
Um, is there a way to pull up the plan, Val?
I can pull up the plan for sure.
I wouldn't mind seeing the, the language.
Um, I can, I have it.
This is Mike Cronin, can, could I say something?
Sure.
Mike, Mike Cronin from Daigle Electrical, how are you? I think Mr. Sutton's statements are a little incorrect, alright, we're not putting pavement over the new relocated pipes, or the proposed relocated pipes. Alright, it's called for a uh, a proposed pervious grass creek pavers. Where you, where you lay them out so that it can take vehicular traffic, you actually grasp the area. Obviously, there is these concrete pavers that support the vehicle, um, so the rest of the line is under pavement right now anyway. And we feel that this, this proposed elevation change benefits Cravenos from a standpoint of maintenance. It actually introduces two new manholes that aren't there right now. And Mike was very, very, um, Mike was correct in stating that these pipes are, are very old. When we, when we purchased this building, and the Daigles purchased this building, and, you know, we had to do some infrastructure work on water pipe and drainage. We, we were, we were tapping into some old asbestos pipe. That, that is definitely sedimentation and, and um, probably getting close to beyond its life expectancy. So, these, these, these uh, engineering details on the plan are accepted in the industry all over the place. You know, vehicular traffic, if it's under pavement, this happens all day long, it's H twenty load piping, it's made for this situation, it doesn't crush when you drive a vehicle over it, and it's got to be set at a proper elevation in the ground. This, this corner of the building is, you know, we, we, we utilize the back structure of this building, we do a lot of work right now. We, we haven't had a day off in COVID, we have a lot of essential contracts for the Commonwealth of Mass, with state lighting, maintenance on a variety of different townships in the Commonwealth. And when, and we staged a lot of vehicles in the back of this, and to make that turnout, it, it's a little cumbersome sometimes. So we need that area, and, and it's been designed to be a pervious area for a reason, due to, due to calculations of, of pavement and impervious and, and what we had to do to compensate this area, even though it is pervious, we had to add landscaping areas around the building and in certain locations to compensate for that square footage that was lost. So um, I just wanted to make sure those facts were stated on record, please.
May I respond? I noticed that there's no mention of a bond from Mr. Cronin.
Not gonna happen, we're not gonna give you a bond.
See, there's your problem, gentlemen.
Why would we, why would we, Pete, why would we? And an easement doesn't mean you own the land. It means you might have, you have the. It means you might have, you have the access in the right to come in and fix a problem on our way. This is what an easement gives you. Maybe I'm incorrect in that.
You are. If you look at the permit that you received, it said you would be responsible for the maintenance, repair and replacement of all drainage structures.
Drainage structures.
Maintenance and repair.
Of the drainage structures, not the sewer structures. Does it specifically say sewers?
No, it says the drainage structure.
So the drainage structures he would own. He has to maintain the drainage, so the sewer structure, he doesn't own. So as we.
So your position is you're going to move our pipes, change all the positions and if something goes wrong, we have to undergo the additional expense to correct them, which is going to cost us much more than it does now if there's a problem. So that's your position. I hope the town understands this and I hope the town understands that it's our pipes, it's our easement and that you shouldn't do any work until you clear up the issue of easement. You should be required to go to the land court first before you do this. Number two.
Peter, I think we discussed, we discussed this issue and if the damage was caused by Daigle, we have no problem fixing your pipes. But if someone does something, flushes a football down a toilet, who knows? And that's discovered, is that really should be Daigle's fault? And should we be responsible for fixing a problem that wasn't caused by Daigle? We've always agreed to this fact. So I don't think there's any discrepancy with that and there never has been, at least from our point of view.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond briefly to Mr. Sutton, please?
Sure.
First of all, I, I correct, if, if there was a one break over there in the last 50 years and I didn't know about it, I apologize. I'll accept Mr. Sutton's representation. I have tried with Mr. Sutton to agree with him that Daigle will correct any problem on the, on the run of pipes on our property. We will fix it. We will come in within 48 hours. I said we'd come in within 24 hours. If we don't fix it quick enough, Mr. Cannibos' team can come in and fix it. We even came to an arrangement whereby we would allow an attachment to go on our property if we didn't pay his expense. We drafted a 10-page easement agreement addressing all these issues. As far as the bond is concerned, we disagreed on the bond, but we agreed on everything else. The last minute, I thought we had a deal, Mr. Cannibos nixed it. There's real questions, legal questions as to whether this easement exists or not. But we're willing to enter into an easement agreement with Mr. Sutton and Mr. Cannibos. We're willing to, to, to make what is vague permanent and, and, and also to have a very clear understanding between the parties as to who, as to the rights and responsibilities. But I can't get them to agree. It's been three years, Mr. Sutton, three years and your client has just stonewalled us. At every meeting I've had with the planning board where I have to come up there and ask for an extension, he's present. He sits there and doesn't say anything. Now, all of a sudden, at the 11, at the, at the 55th minute of the 11th hour, he retains counsel and comes in three years later to complain. I think this is highly unfair and I think town council is correct. This is a dispute between private parties and we'll have to resolve it amongst ourselves.
Val, just put the plan back up for one second, just so I understand something. So Mr. Cronin, what you're actually touching for pipes is the sewer pipe you're putting in those two manholes there that I see? Is that what you're doing?
Yes, sir.
And are we touching the?
Solid lines up top.
Yeah, right there. So, so we're going sewer to sewer, right?
Yep.
And are we moving the water line?
We're lowering the sewer, the water line and the drainage. And on the sewer line, you can see that we're adding a manhole where we tie in. Right, right about at the existing loading dock there.
Right.
And then another one up at the top where the retaining wall is and that's where the elevation drop happens at that point. The details on the next sheet will show the elevation changes proposed and, and existing if you wanted to get a look at that.
You know, I think there's an argument here, folks, that this is a better resolution than we have presently. We have three manhole, three manholes that can discover a blockage or a break much quicker. Right now, we only have one manhole down near the street. These pipes are 50 years old, maybe older. They're probably full of sentiment and as I think, as Mr. Cronin mentioned, they may be asbestos made pipes. We're going to put brand new pipes in. I think in general, this is a much better resolution than what we have today. And also, we're willing to give him, give Mr. Cannibos a reasonable easement agreement without going to court. I might also add that there's no question that under Massachusetts law, we have the right to change the pipes in this easement as long as our changing the location of the pipes do not frustrate the purpose of the easement. I know you guys are not judges or lawyers, but I think it's common sense that by lowering the pipe six feet and changing the pitch for only about 120 feet, I think I'm right, Mike. Am I correct till it rejoins?
Yeah, yeah, close to that, Mike, yep.
That's not going to frustrate the purpose of this easement. But without this change, we are unable to utilize our property appropriately.
Well, the dock line it outlines there, that's your property line, right?
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
So, well, one thing I don't like, you know, we, we got eight inch pipe. You were going to put an eight inch, I assume PVC, Mike, from manhole to manhole?
Yeah.
And then it goes six inch out to the street? Or out to the driveway?
We're, we're replacing in kind. So if it's a existing six inch sewer, it's a six inch new SDR pipe, eight inch water main tied to an existing eight inch water main and the drainage obviously tied accordingly. We're not diminishing any of the flow factors.
Yeah, right, it does say six inch, okay. I got you.
And once again, Mr. Sorrentino, I, I really think that the board should not be sitting as a court and making a decision as to whether we can relocate the pipes or what the efficacy of the easement is. We're just here asking for a permit for the storm management permit. Mr. Sutton is trying to put the cart before the horse. He's trying to delay this more. We want our permit. If we have to go to court, we'll represent to the court that we have our permit. We may have to get court permission to relocate the pipes. I don't want to go to court, get permission to relocate the pipes, have to come back to the town. The town may say, well, now you have to go through a whole new process. I think that'd be fundamentally unfair when we've already gone through the process. We deserve the permit at this point.
Okay. Anybody else got anything to say? Good. All right, so Val, I think we, I think Sean made a good point about item six. I think that, that the easement part needs to be resolved between the parties in a court. But I think the other item as far as the pipes, I think the acknowledgement, we'll make them do the acknowledgement as town council said and go from there.
Notification.
Notification, yes.
So we can, we can draft something for you to consider at the next meeting, talking about the proof of notification to the adjacent landowner. I can also talk to council about condition number six, if you'd like me to, just to make sure that, that we get his input on condition number six.
Ms. Gingrich, I will make a, another representation. I will do my best before the next meeting to call Mr. Sutton up and see if we can finally resolve this. It may be that there'll be some impetus at this point on the other side to resolve it if it appears you guys are going to eliminate condition number five. We want to be good neighbors. We want to be good neighbors. We want to assure Mr. Cannibos that if there's a break or there's a, a blockage and it's our responsibility, we'll take care of it promptly.
Yeah, I mean, we don't really get into, I mean, this isn't a, a contract I'm putting out on the street. You know, you're going to have to work with them as far as, you know, you're going to, obviously you're interrupting his, his water and sewer service. So you've got to coordinate with them to do it at non-peak time and, you know, Mike knows, Mike knows a routine, so, right? I mean, that all has to be worked out, so that's understood. You might have to put a small pump in and bypass pump for a while if, you know, if it's during the day and he's working or whatever.
We're aware of that, yeah.
Right? So.
You know, absolutely, yep.
So that's kind of understood. Okay, so Val, what do you want to do?
I would recommend continuing the hearing to August so that we can discuss whatever council suggests.
So, so we'll have to extend the action deadline, though.
Yep, I think we did get an extension through the end of August.
Okay.
So, so we're okay with the action deadline and then we'll also prepare a draft approval for the next meeting so we can keep the hearing open to discuss the conditions and then consider the draft.
All right.
You want to discuss the kind of notice I'm going to send or what, what exactly is, is of concern?
I would, I would say certified mal-return receipt so we have at least someone's signature.
That's fine.
That works.
I think the idea was to discuss condition number six with council to see if he had any.
I see what you mean, sure, sure. If, if, if some, some agreement could be worked out between council, you mean?
Uh, yeah, and just how to word it.
Yeah, fine.
Okay, so I'll, I'll take a motion to extend the public hearing to August 4th at, what's open time, Val? Eight, eight o'clock open?
Eight o'clock is open and I, I do have to mention that we have a caller with, with a hand up.
Oh, okay.
If you'd like to take that. I'm not sure if it's the same caller or not.
Yeah, okay, you could take, you could take the call.
Okay. Go ahead, caller.
This is Mr. Sutton again. Why don't you put on the agenda the discussion of a bond? It seems to me that that's, that's one of the sticking points here. You just mentioned that there's going to be a change, there's going to be problems. And with respect to the easement, I don't know why that's being taken out. I see no reason why it, it's being eliminated.
We didn't say we were eliminating it.
Well, it's not even on the, it's not even on the agenda today for today's hearing.
It's, neither of them are listed that way.
You know, I think Mr. Sutton, I think it's confusion. Do you mean the bond about the work, about the construct, a construction bond? Or do you mean a bond that if it break, if there's a blockage and we don't fix it quickly? What bond are you referring to, Mr. Sutton?
That's correct.
See, this is the, this is the issue.
So what kind of a bond do you want? For how long? Do you want him to give you a bond for a year after he does the work or you want a bond for the next five or 10 years? What do you want? What are you asking him?
We wanted a bond that would run with the property in case they sold the property, that it would run as long as we would agree to have the bond run. And they just, you heard today, no bond, they wouldn't even discuss it.
It's, it's uneconomic to have a bond forever, Mr. Chairman. I've never heard of that kind of condition. I thought now.
That has nothing to do with the board, so, I mean, I could see, I could see a bond for a year from after he does the work. That's pretty standard, so, but, wow, that's, you guys will have to fight that out. So, okay, so like I said, we'll, I'll take a motion, continue the public hearing to August 4th at four o'clock and then can, uh, extend the action deadline to August 31st, 2020.
What time did you say? Four o'clock?
Eight o'clock, August 4th.
Thank you. So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Gingrich. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your time.
So, Rondi, I need a second, Sean.
Second, Sean.
Harry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman votes yes. Thanks, everybody. August 4th, eight o'clock.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Okay, what do we got left?
I think we have one more ZBA case.
Oh, you want to talk about Middlesex Ave and Jefferson?
Sure. So I, I dumped some of the, the materials into the Dropbox for you guys to review. The project is sort of in the middle of their review with the ZBA. The traffic is being peer reviewed. There's still some outstanding issues with the traffic review. The engineering stormwater piece is being peer reviewed. Still have some outstanding issues with that, trying to get the stormwater to work and also keep the grades down along Middlesex Ave to get their, to get their separation to groundwater. They've had to kind of show a very much raised site along Middlesex and they're showing a seven foot wall in some places right along the sidewalk, which is a concern. So Paul had a great idea and kind of passed that along to them to look at porous pavement to bring that elevation down. So I believe they're going to look at that. We submitted comments to them just earlier this week and our peer reviewer has submitted comments to them as well. So they're still in the, the stage of revising plans, getting things to work. The Conservation Commission did vote to approve their wetlands and riverfront delineations and floodplain. So they have sort of the lines where they're, where they can, what they, with what they can work with. And they'll file a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission at some point soon. So they're still, you know, in the middle of review. They're showing four stories with a partial garage along Middlesex, two, two buildings, one in the front, one in the back. They're showing improvements to Jefferson Road. And that's sort of just a kind of a quick rundown. If you guys have specific questions, we can, I can go over, I can try to answer those. I would say if you'd like to kind of, there won't, I don't anticipate the ZBA voting on this before your August 4th meeting. If you'd like to reconsider, if you'd like to consider it again at that point.
I'm being kind of stubborn on this, so.
How so?
What does that mean?
That means, you know, they don't have to come in front of us. Our opinion doesn't really seem to count, so.
Wow.
So, you know, we're a busy crew. Someone specifically is looking for all of our expertise and would like our opinions, I guess we would do it. I would do it for you, Val, if that's what you'd like.
Thank you.
But, other than that.
I, I do feel like I'm channeling you all and trying to put questions and comments into town com, town staff comment letters that I think you guys would, would bring up, so if that makes any, if that helps.
Helps, but.
I mean, I think eventually we can, you know, there's a lot of info we're to digest in like just a couple of days. So, but I think eventually, you know, I would, I'd at least feel better about our jobs if we, you know, put a recommendation for, you know, hey, ZBA, maybe you might want to, I want to have this discussion with them, you know, that kind of thing. At least, at least.
I feel better if they had to make a presentation to us, you know.
Yeah, me too. I mean, I remember from a long time being on this board between Lynn Guin and Carol that we should be trying to get as many things as we can out of these developers for the improvement of the town. I'd like them to build a, a new fire station for us. There you go, because that's a lot of housing over in that area on the other side of the tracks. But not necessarily is that something we would get.
Well, they did agree to contribute towards it. So they signed a development agreement with the town and I can, actually I can add that to the materials that, that you have in front of you. That might help a lot, outlining what they've agreed to and basically what the selectmen asked them to contribute and, and sort of limited some things. Like they, they set a height limit of 55 feet based on their four stories. And so I can send that to you guys so you can look through that to, to consider what's, what's included in that.
So they are actually building off of an adjacent. So, they are actually building off of an adjacent to Jefferson Road. I'm trying to understand these plans. It's very hard for me to, I'll print them out at work so I can look at them in more detail.
If you want some, if you want a copy of the plans, I can request that, that they send you copies of the plans.
No, what they put on here is fine. I just print them out 11 by 17 so I can follow the whole thing. It's hard to go flipping from one sheet to the next on the computer.
I would respectfully request that you do an architectural look.
I certainly will.
Thank you.
Yeah, Rondi, one thing that I had put in the town staff comments is on the elevations that they showed us. They had some sort of vertical elements, you know, in the building design and on the facade. And I thought, you know, with such a, with, they're going to raise the site to accommodate the stormwater. So, the parking lot's going to be raised and then they're going to have a half story of parking and then the four stories of the building, you know, probably should minimize those vertical elements and not make it look taller.
Yeah.
Well, I think you also ought to tie in how Terry's strong point here, the HVAC stuff, you know. We're going to have roof units. What are we going to have for units here?
Yeah, they're, what they've talked about was having the peaked roof. That was a topic of discussion too, because it does make the building taller. But it also does, you know, creates a certain architecture too. They would hide the HVAC behind the peak in the back. They haven't shown what that actually looks like, which, you know, could be requested as well.
Yeah, I'd probably tell them to do it in a wells if they could instead of open to the back.
Yeah, because open to the back, it's a very long building. They're going to open the short end of the building to the back. Is anything you see from the side, I mean, coming down Middlesex either way, you're going to see the equipment of this open to the quote unquote back.
I don't think it's that. I don't have a map in front of me to see where the next person, you know, but.
Let me pull this up.
You know, if you look at the land right behind them. I had it earlier.
Yeah, noise becomes an issue and then, you know, the world of COVID, you know, we've got to have ear exchange and all this good stuffs, right? So.
So, this is the front building along Middlesex, the grading plan. Let me get the layout plan for you. So, this is the layout plan for Building A along Middlesex, Middlesex Ave here, Lovers Brook. So, it's sort of, this is the parking lot in the front. They're showing a seven foot wall along this sidewalk, which is one of my concerns.
So, it better be an architectural wall, better not just be some concrete thing, right?
Well, I guess a seven foot wall is much taller than, it's really high, especially right in.
Get out of the parking lot and the ramp down to Middlesex on that side if you have a seven foot wall along Middlesex.
Yeah, so.
Make that transition.
Right, so those, right, site distance and the grade here is one thing that we called, called out because this, there's a potential for a fire truck to really bottom out on this grade.
Anybody.
Yeah, yeah, anybody, true. So, and like I said, Paul had the idea of, you know, instead of doing infiltration under these parking areas, why not look at porous pavement, make that BMP part of the, I know, but it would lower this front portion because you wouldn't have to.
Porous pavement's only good for so long, you know that, right?
Well, so far, so good.
I don't see in the package anything that shows the building elevations unless I'm missing something here.
They didn't, that was probably part of your last package. Let me pull up my Dropbox folder that I should have some things in here and maybe pull it up for you. Hopefully. It's, if I can't find it here, I will definitely send it to you.
So, and I'm kind of confused. I don't see how you get into the Building A parking area from this plan.
You come in on the other side of the street.
Right here.
Right here.
Yeah, so this.
Come down around, yeah.
This is a two-way proposed. This one was a right in, right out only to avoid conflicts right here. So, that's how it's shown right now.
Yeah, but I see Building A is to the left. This is the surface parking. How do you get into Building A?
So, to get into the garage, you would go down.
Okay, I see it over there.
Yep.
Need to diagram the pavement that's new.
They're proposing to do some upgrades to Jefferson Ave. They agreed to that in the development agreement. Let me just flip this to the back building. So, you go all the way back, Jefferson Road to that parking area that's right here. So, they're showing parking in the front, building along the backside here. We asked them to revisit this parking area because the fire truck doesn't make it around. Kind of crashes into this garage right here or has to stop back up. Also doesn't make this turn right here. So, we've asked them to look at that.
This is enormous. Oh, well. I think it's too big. Oh, well.
It's tight. The site is very tight. They're trying to use every inch of what they have here. There's a lot of resource area out here with riverfront and wetlands and floodplain.
Yeah. Well, it's always trying to fit 10 pounds of potato in a five pound sack.
Yeah.
So, I can send you, I can send you the architecturals.
That'd be great.
Yep.
You can, or you can just post them in the Dropbox and just send me a link.
So, make sure, did they give you anything on signage?
Nothing on signage.
Well, you should get that, right? Where's it going to go? They're going to have something.
That's a great comment.
Up front. It's another thing blocking sight view, so make sure you get the right stuff.
It bothers me that Building A is right on the property line too. I just, it's in an area that doesn't, you know. This isn't the general business district, so to speak.
Yeah. Any reason why the building's not up in the street and the parking's in the back? It just doesn't fit?
They've looked at pulling the building up, but that, I'm trying to remember why it was pulled back. I don't think they could get the parking to work otherwise. And they thought that pushing it back a little bit because it's four stories would help with the feel of it on Middlesex, that it wouldn't feel so tall.
But right on the street there, it's going to feel really tall on, just on Jefferson alone.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then Terry, you had, Terry, you said something about doing the HVAC, you know, did you say in a well?
Yeah, you mentioned that, you know, they'd have a pitched roof, but it'd only be pitched probably what, like eight feet high or something, right? Like, that's kind of what I'm used to seeing is, you know, it's only pitched eight feet high, you get the effect. But then right behind it, you know, the roof is flat and you got like a well, you know, an eight foot tall kind of swimming pool that you put all your equipment in.
Yeah, that's what we did at the high school.
Yeah, and it really hides the sound.
Hides it, it kind of buffers some of the noise from it.
I think that's what they're planning on doing, but.
Yeah, the only reason I brought it up is Rondi mentioned just doing it on the front side and having it open to the back, which I don't think will be a good idea. I mean, I know it's right by the railroad and everything, but, you know, you know, the sound will still travel pretty well over that, over that area.
Yeah, you're going to need some, going to need some signage there too, right? Residential parking, permit parking and all that other crap, right?
Yeah, otherwise people will park there to go and.
Park there and walk, take train.
Maybe not anymore, but.
Yeah, well. Okay, anything else?
You know, do you happen to know what they're planning for an HVAC system on it?
I don't know. They're, I don't think they've, well, they probably know from other buildings, but I don't, they haven't gotten into that level of detail with this.
Probably a VRF, you know, a larger kind of with the individual units in the apartments or whatever they are.
Probably. Yeah, I mean, more than likely, but if it's, if it's water, right, I just worry about like a tower being taller than that parapet or taller than that pitched roof. So, it might, something to look out for.
Are we going to have any traffic signals here or anything? Pedestrian signals rather, like crossing the street, going to have more people here going to the train? We're going to have, these sidewalks got to be done on both sides. They're going to have to do handicap from one corner to the other, right?
Yep. They're only showing new sidewalks on one side of Jefferson right now. They have to do both sides per the development agreements. That was one of our comments. They are, I think they're going to be doing a, what's it called? The flashing pedestrian.
Okay.
You know, whatever that's called.
I mean, that's a fancy name.
Right, doing that across Middlesex and they've agreed to redo the crosswalks on Jefferson. Yeah. But yeah.
Plan for your, Val?
How many what?
Units are planned between the two buildings?
108.
108.
And it's 20% affordable at 50% AMI. Mostly one bedrooms, but some twos and then the required number of threes. The parking ratio, I think they have it at 1.6.
That's low for Wilmington.
Do you ask for bike racks?
Yes, they're going to show some bike racks in the garage and then in the back for the second building.
We're requiring as much sustainable planning and design as possible?
That can be a great recommendation, yeah.
Yeah. Maybe some solar.
And what I could do, if you want me to pass sort of this initial feedback to the ZBA, I can do that. Or if you'd like to wait to just sort of give formal feedback, however you want to do it. Or I can just take these things and insert them myself.
You can insert them yourself.
Okay.
You know, I would, I would as much as possible, you know, say these are the items the planning board recommends. Maybe we can agree after we read it next time.
What does this all connect to? Is there a path or anything out here? What's in the back at the end of Jefferson is?
There's, no, it's sort of, there's that, there's a parking lot back here where there's some trucks parked. There aren't really trails. The railroad's right beside here, right beside the parking lot. There's some nice, you know, woods back here, but it turns really wet as you get to the back of the site.
I'm sorry, there's no picnic area, there's no community area, I guess is the word I was looking for, right?
No, they're not showing anything like that.
Yeah.
They have some like indoor community spaces, but.
So, there's no balconies or anything here?
I think they do have balconies on, for each of the.
No hibashis.
No barbecue grills out on the balconies.
No barbecue grills. That's what I say, you know, you ought to give that some thought.
I'm not sure I like the idea that providing, you know, only, what is that? 14 parking bays, 15 parking garages for 108 units?
Get enough visitor parking, Val?
They don't have any visitor parking. That was one of, that was one of the comments that we made.
This is not an over 55, right? Need some visitor parking.
They were confident that their parking spaces would accommodate tenants and visitors. They explained that in the front building, they have sort of spaces that are dedicated to prospective, prospective renters and folks who are visiting the office. But no dedicated visitor spaces for, you know, visiting tenants.
No, the visitors are all going to park across the street in the Jefferson, whatever the buildings were built. And then they'll complain.
Yeah, that was our concern. So, we did ask them to put it in the lease agreements that they couldn't park over there and put signage up, but then, you know, what really happens may be different.
How does one get mail at one of these places? They all have slots?
No, you have a mailbox, like a.
I mean, you know, just being the age of Amazon.
So, a lot of apartment buildings now, Michael, have specific mailrooms that have.
That's what I was getting at. You know, I know my son was in Colorado. If something didn't fit in his mailbox, it went to that area. So, if you knew you had something coming, you had to go check. So, so when he forgot his iPad at home and my wife mailed it to him, it was there for 30 days because he didn't realize that was the condition of the building.
But a lot of them set up something that they'll put a note, you know, a postal note in your little mailbox where you get your just basic mail that you have a package and it's in bin 12, you know, and get the key from the manager's office or something. Package bins, so to speak.
I don't have anything else. You guys get anything else? Angela, you're awful quiet. I mean, if you work with Rondi, you must have some something to say.
Nope, I'm good.
All right.
Rondi's outspoken for everybody at the BHA.
Sean, your kids are getting big. You're going to grab a couple of apartments or what?
Not yet.
Now, you waiting for Lowell Street, Main Street?
Yeah, right.
All right. All right, anything else, Val?
You want to put this on the August agenda to discuss again?
Sure, whatever you'd like. Are we going to be able to come back in the building in August?
I have no idea.
Probably not, right?
I think we should probably operate as if we're going to be on Zoom until we hear otherwise. I haven't, I haven't heard anything.
Oh, fun.
All right. So, why don't you give us a lowdown on what's going on with the senior center in Newtown Hall?
Hang on, let me get comfy.
Well, I don't know more than just what was discussed at town meeting. I think now that the, that the, those articles passed, I think we'll look at, they'll put out an RFP to look at the feasibility. That's all I know.
Probably what's going to happen, Michael, with these two articles once they get ready to fruition for either a, what do you call it, a two and a half, prop two and a half override to, you know, fund them. They'll probably go up to town meeting together because you will have a whole series of proponents that'll be for the senior center and not for the town hall and there'll be a whole bunch of proponents that will be for Newtown Hall.
But it is, if the senior center is going to go with the town hall currently stands, can't do that without having a new town hall. So, or at least get a temporary place for Val and Cheryl to sit and yell at each other. I mean, geez.
But, uh, you know, you knew, you knew when we did the public safety building and the middle school. I mean, they weren't built simultaneously, but they were passed.
Passed simultaneously, yeah. All right. Anything else? So that, uh, legal thing that you sent, does that all scrape away?
Yeah, so if you guys could get back to me on, um, whether you're okay with doing releases, um, for that case. I emailed that to you, forwarded an email from attorney Silverstein at KP, our attorney. Um, just let me know if you're okay with doing a release for that. Or if you'd like to give me a call, we can talk.
That's the one with the auto body, right?
No, that's, um.
Which one is that?
No, that's for, um, the latest case, um, where the subdivision was appealed.
Subdivision, which one?
Three, six, two.
Oh, no, I thought it was for, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Do I get the wrong, wrong person in my head? No, it said DuSett, that's the gas station person, right?
Oh, six, yeah, that, DuSett is the six thirteen main, but they didn't, they didn't, um. They didn't sue the board.
Okay.
So this would be, you know, dropping it and signing, um, everyone signing releases.
All right.
Well, I'm okay with it. Can we just say we're okay with it?
You can say now, or you can say later, or we can talk later.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. I sent you the email, so.
It is interesting.
But it was said, was that Sean? It is a little different.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's different that they would want releases and, you know, but I'll, I'll call Val anyway.
Yeah, give me a, give me a call. Give me a call. I think that's probably better to talk.
Yeah.
Talk later.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. All right, we good?
That's, that's all we have, I think. Someone stop me if it's untrue.
No, we won't talk.
Harold, you still there? You've been awful quiet tonight.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
All right, see yous all later. Be safe.
Thank you.
All right, talk to you later.
Good night.
Bye.
Good night.